The meeting is now called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Moore? Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 6th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we get started, I would like to acknowledge our former mayor Suzanne Walters is here in the audience. As we all know, she sat in this seat for 20 years. And also, if you do not know, Suzanne was appointed to the school board last week. And also, if you did not know, it's her birthday. So, happy birthday Suzanne. We'll have a drink later. Any communications?
No, Mayor.
May I have a motion concerning the minutes?
Yes, I'd like to move that since all members of council have been provided with the copy of the minutes of our work session and the meeting of November 20th and the work session and meeting of December 4th, if there's no additions or corrections, I move with dispens of the reading of the minutes and that they be approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address Mayor and Council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Ordinance 1538.
Madam Mayor, I offer ordinance 1538 to be taken up for second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1538 on second reading?
An ordinance amending Chapter 5, 6038-D1A of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Stone Harbor and relating to setback exceptions.
The public hearing on ordinance 1538 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1538 be passed on second reading and advance the third and final reading.
Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Will the clerk read the title? Well, do we proceed at this point onto third and final? If we didn't get it approved on the second? We'll be bringing this back after the first of the year with revision. We did, planning board did go over this and there will be a revision coming back, probably the first meeting in February. Resolution 2018, S-218.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to offer Resolution 2018-S-218 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution is for the appointment of three officers to, Special Law Enforcement Officer Second Class prior to their attendance to the police academy.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-S-219.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2018-S-219 for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund of a water service fee in the amount of $1,513 to GAC Properties LLC.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-S-220.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2018-S-220 for adoption.
Second.
This is to refund the disconnect fee which, where there was a cost of $525 and the director of construction decided he wanted to keep the three-quarter inch water service.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-S-221.
I offer Resolution 2018-S-221 for adoption.
Second.
This is the rejection of two bids, both of which exceeded the engineer's estimate for our bike pathway.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-S-222.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2018-S-222 for adoption.
Second.
This is to put excess, well, not excess, but equipment from Public Works on .gov deals, which is a Ford 250, 20,004, 20,006, a water tank with a pump and a bulk lot of paving stones. And we are going to realize, the opening bid is going to be $10,000 each for the utility bodies.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-S-23.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to offer Resolution 2018-S-233 for adoption.
Second.
This is to increase the, the contract for the new police addition by $21,254 to cover improvements to the squad room, the monitoring system, the IT system and the locker rooms.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And now, no other items on the agenda. We will hear from Mrs. Kramer.
Hello, everyone. Having just completed nine years as a councilwoman and former council president, I have been truly honored to have worked for all the people of Stone Harbor. I fulfilled my promise of honesty, integrity and dedication. Together, we have tried to bring the best services to Stone Harbor. I have always felt we had a responsibility to our merchants to make the business district welcoming and a viable place for everyone so that they could make a decent living. Without our new merchants such as the wonderful Harbor Theater, many thanks to Brett and Clint for their foresight in knowing how that would benefit Stone Harbor along with the Harbor Pub and the Burger Bar and more to come, just wait and see. And to the Reeds and all of our local merchants that have sustained our community for many years, and of course, we cannot forget our Chamber of Commerce, so we thank you. What a ride it's been, not always joyful, but always satisfying. Nine years with some really wonderful people. I just want to tell you about some of the memorable projects we completed together as a team with cooperation and respect. As you probably know by now, I grew up in a small town called Oakland next to Haddonfield. I always admired the hanging baskets lining their streets. So, when I moved to Stone Harbor 27 years ago and became President of the Garden Club along with their blessings, I approached Greg Sheeran, former Public Works Director, who's sitting right there, and Ken Hawke, our Administrator, and asked if they would entertain the idea of putting the baskets on 96th Street with the Garden Club footing the bill. And voila, it happened. Many thanks to Greg and Ken. The farmer's market was started with 10 vendors by Ann Wannen, a former councilwoman. After she left council, along with Public Works and myself and a team of dedicated workers, it grew to 27 vendors. I love being present every Sunday from 7:30 to 12:30 greeting everyone, not because I had to, but because I wanted to. It is now one of the most successful markets in Cape May County. Again, with teamwork including Mike Matera and Kim Stevenson and of course, Public Works. I even thought it would be fun to have a parsley rope to kick off a season. Kim and I put together many of those with Mike donating the parsley. Another idea was that maybe Stone Harbor would like to have a bocce league. I had played for many years off the island. So, with just 12 women, the bocce league was formed at Chelsea Park. And now, this past season, we had 47 women at Same Place under the direction of the Rec Department and Tim. Thank you, Tim, for putting up with all those women. We know that, some of them are here. And again, thank you to Public Works for maintaining the courts. Our next team project was probably the most memorable and important one to me. After much perseverance, we obtained an I-beam from the North Tower, which was bombed on 9/11. The people of Stone Harbor decided to have a pocket park, which was named Freedom Park, to display the artifact, a quiet respite to reflect and remember. There's so many people to thank for contributing to this memorial. The council at that time, the 9/11 Committee, Garden Greenhouse for doing all the landscaping, Public Works, the fire company, our police department and open space funding from the county. And in case you didn't know, Stone Harbor had never applied for open space funding. I applied for the first time and I think everybody takes, gets some as open space funding. This project was full of emotion but became an inspiration for everyone. Lastly, the 96th Street bathrooms, still a work in progress, but when completed will reflect what Stone Harbor really is, the seashore at its best. Thank you to Mark de Blasio for his perseverance, as I was sending him pictures from all over Europe of the latest technology in bathrooms. We had some very interesting meetings, which I will truly miss. There are many projects we worked together on, but for me, these were the most memorable. Again, thank you to Public Works and all the people that made these happen. Teamwork. Maybe one person gets the ball rolling, but to keep it going and completing the project, it takes many. So, thank you to everyone. Did you notice how many times I mentioned Public Works? Our town is truly indebted to them for all they do. They make it work. I've worked with some incredible, caring people and I want to give a shout out to them. I hope I don't forget anybody or anyone, but if I do, you'll have to forgive me. First and foremost, Grant Russ, Director of Public Works, Rocky and Craig, excuse me, Supervisors, none of the projects mentioned could have been accomplished without their dedication. I have worked with them for nine years and it's been my extreme honor to have known them. Thank you, gentlemen. Along with them, Lisa and Rebecca, who are tucked away in the public work offices with hardly anyone knowing exactly how much they accomplish every day. Hundreds of calls a month, payroll, scheduling, and they do more and accomplish more than one realizes. Special thanks to all the men and women that are part of Public Works, buildings, grounds, carpentry, automotive, electrical, beaches, water and sewers, streets, maintenance, special events, and don't forget the best trash employees in Cape May County. You name it, Public Works does it all. Thank you again for making my job such a pleasure. Thank you to the police department, Chief Shudder, Captain Palmer, I see you back there, Sergeants Walker, Jackson, Hartzell, Soraka, Smith, Minatola and Turelli and the rest of the police force for keeping all of Stone Harbor safe. Another employee tucked away is Maureen Jackson, always doing her job unnoticed but always efficient. Thank you to all of you. I also want to thank the former chief, Paul Reynolds, who I worked with for many years. To our fire chief, Roger Stanford, Bob McClure, Sam Wehrman, Jonathan, JT and all the EMTs, everyone on call 24/7, always our unsung heroes. Many, many thanks. To Deb, Scott and Laura, thank you. And of course, Deb, every year makes us pepper jelly, so we have pepper jelly. To Sandy Basaco, all the lifeguards, beach taggers, we all thank you for having one of the safest beaches in South Jersey. To the Rec and Tours Department, thank you for providing all the activities all year round for our residents and visitors. Into the Borough Hall we go. Greeting you is Diane with her pleasant voice and smile, a real asset as your first contact entering the building. Thank you. In the office behind is Deb Cantalora, she's our in-house florist, along with bubbly personality Kate, busy ladies but always willing to stop and help whenever they can. Thank you to them. Margaret is in the tax office and sometimes doubles out front, willing and able. Another thank you. Upstairs, we have Jim, our CFO, always watching out for our money and yes, how we spend it. So, thank you, Jim. Then there's Patty, what a woman, does an incredible job, hidden away during the work of two people and never complaining, so many thanks, Patty. The zoning office is next with Mike Kuchenberry keeping everyone in tow. And now, the new guy on the block, I call him Smiling Ray, who has brought to Stone Harbor an immense amount of knowledge. Thank you. And, well, oh my, now there's Sue Brown. Does anyone actually realize, excuse me, everything she does, the organizer, the overseer, the greeter, doing the work of many? Thank you for your dedication. I also want to acknowledge Joanne Massia. She made everyone toe the line, but all for the benefit of Stone Harbor, so I thank you. And next is Wonder Woman, AKA Carrie. There is not enough time to tell you what Carrie does on a daily basis. As deputy clerk, she is on top of everything. Her credentials are enabling her to step in at a moment's notice to help when and whenever, stopping to help everyone. She will no longer let me touch the copier. That's our inside joke. So, thanks, Carrie. When Kim came to Stone Harbor, she applied for the utility collector and I interviewed her along with the utility committee. And back then, that's how it was done. I thought she was a good fit for Stone Harbor and I was proven right. She was hired and now has moved up to the assistant to the administrator. As I previously said, she took part in many of the projects I was involved in, so thank you to Kim. Jill is new to Stone Harbor, only about five years, working long hours, involved in every aspect of the borough, implementing her expertise for Stone Harbor and working with each department to continue to make Stone Harbor the very best. I thank you, Jill. Well, here we are to the most important person in the whole borough. I don't know if you can guess who it is, but it's Sue Stanford. Dedicated beyond words, had a knee replacement and was back to work in two weeks. That's almost unheard of. More knowledgeable than anyone else in the borough. You ask her a particular ordinance or what happened last year or even five years ago and she remembers. Stone Harbor never wants to lose her. I can't say how much I admire her and how she has made my job over these past nine years a lot easier. Many thanks. To our solicitor, Mark, thank you for guiding us through some very difficult decisions. And to Michael Donahue, our former solicitor, now a Superior Court Judge, I thank him. Now to the council. Over the years, I've worked with many council people and have learned from them. Just to name, excuse me, a few are, and to thank are Joanne Vaul, Barry Mastrolangelo, my dear friend Al Carusi, thank you, Al. And our former mayor Suzanne Walters, who by the way, did a great job for 20 years. It's been a pleasure serving with all of you. To Ray and Charles, I thank you truly for your support and wish you well. To the new council member, Reese Moore, and soon to be Bob Levens, who will be taking my place, I would encourage you to be your own person, to be able to compromise, not going along just to go along, treating everyone with respect and not circumventing the process just to obtain your own personal agenda, doing the right thing and what is best for Stone Harbor. And last, but certainly not least, Judy Davies-Dunhauer, our mayor. Judy likes to say to me, "What's up, Kramer?" Or, "How's it going, sister?" So, we came to council together nine years ago and it's been quite a ride. You have an example in Judy of a fair-minded, nonjudgmental person, someone truly dedicated to Stone Harbor and doing what is best for Stone Harbor. She is on the path to being one of the great mayors that Stone Harbor has elected. Thank you, Judy, for your inspirations, friendship and leadership. So, in ending, my friends, I try to keep this together, I thank you for making my nine years quite an experience I will never forget. Arrivederci, au revoir, al viterzain, adios, and so long for now. God bless everyone and God bless America. I know it was a little long, but there were so many people I had to thank over the nine years, so thank you for bearing with me. Voila. Oh, oh, thank you. Oh, how beautiful. Oh, they smell delicious. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I know that there's some people that came specifically tonight to wish Joan well, so at this point, I'll just open it up to the public. If anybody would like to come up and has anything to say to Joan, just come on up.
Counsel?
Mayor?
This is hard, I will tell you. I started my venture here seven years ago. It'll be eight years this coming up summer. And I didn't know a lot of people here. Everybody thought that I wasn't going to last. You know, Stone Harbor, that pub has been through so many different owners. The owner that was in there was rough, who owned the property, as we all know. And there were some friends that I met over the time. I said I didn't know a lot of people and there's three people that I knew very well. One was Joan, Mayor Judy, and Mayor Suzanne Walters. Those three were the only ones I really knew coming in. And I felt like when I first met these three people, I felt welcome. And Joan was always there on my side, all the time. If I needed something, she was there. So, then I go, new owner comes in, his name's Clint, buys the mall. I was actually exiting out, no one knew, but I was actually leaving 2013. I didn't want to be there anymore. I had enough with Bruce. So, then I stayed with Clint. He's my landlord, now my business partner. And I'm never going to forget the day that I called Joan and called Mayor Suzanne. We sat at my place and I told them our idea of what we wanted to do with the movie theater. And the support that I got from Joan was amazing. She was there for me every minute during that process of buying the theater and looking out for us every minute to make sure things were right because she knew how important it was for the town to have this theater back that was in such shambles for so many years. And you look back and you say, wow, Joan's been here for nine years. She already said her accomplishments, but there's a lot that she did under the watch of council. She was an asset to this city, a major, major asset. And I think the nine years, it felt like you probably were here for 25, 30 years. But it's an asset. And I really, I'm going to miss Joan, I am. I'm going to miss her, you know, just texting on the phone and just asking me what movie's coming out this weekend or what's happening. So, I'm going to miss her. But for me, I'm always going to remember Joan Kramer because I don't think I would be, I have a possibility I might have left here in 2013, but I think someone like her really helped me out.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate it. So, I am having a very nice get-together at my place tonight to honor Joan at my place. Everybody is very welcome to come. It's no charge, so come on in and have a good time and let's honor Joan's great nine years in this wonderful, wonderful town, by the way. I love Stone Harbor. I know I don't live here, but I absolutely love it. I have two businesses here and I wouldn't trade it for the world, so.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to come up to the podium?
I have to state my name and address and swear to God that everything I say is true, nothing but the truth. I haven't been to many council meetings in the past year or so, but I used to attend all of them very regularly. Getting older, 82, still going Stronghauer, but I just want to make one little statement that always comes to my mind when I think of the years which Joan has served here and some of the tough times that she had to go through. She always brought a nice, light sense of humor to the council meeting. I'll never forget the first time she walked in with a hard hat on. I wondered what it was all about. Oh, she still has it. But it just made me think that in the good times and the bad times, in the good times, it's easy to do and say the right things and all, but I always felt with her that in the bad times, she was able to, there's that saying, "If everyone lit just one little candle, what a bright world this would be." I saw her do that and watched her countenance and listened to her voice through many hard times. She was always able to rise above and light that one little candle and to help it be a brighter world. Thank you, Joan, and God bless you. It'll be in my thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do have correspondence that I was asked to read from the president of the Garden Club. "I had planned to be here today to represent the Garden Club of Stone Harbor, but grandchildren's Christmas concerts have drawn me back to PA. The Garden Club of Stone Harbor would like to recognize and applaud the lifetime of service Joan Kramer has given to the borough of Stone Harbor. We would especially like to thank Joan for her loyalty and contributions to the Garden Club as a longtime member. Additionally, we appreciate her leadership contributions as Garden Club President and her dedication to our garden of remembrance. Stone Harbor and many of us personally will miss you, Joan. Best wishes for the next chapter in your life. Enjoy the warm weather, but come back and visit us. Fondly, Sandy Slabick, President, Garden Club of Stone Harbor." Anybody on council? Any words for Kramer?
Joan, it's been a pleasure working with you and I wish you the best in your new location there and thank you for the time we spent here.
So, in closing?
I was just going to say one quick thing.
All right, go ahead.
Joan, I want to thank you. I know we've only known each other two years now and our paths hadn't crossed prior to me coming on to council. But I just want to say, in that time getting to know you and mentioning your name around town, I got to tell you, it's amazing how well-respected you are amongst this community. And I had not known that prior to getting on to council amongst second homeowners, business elite and local residents. So, just leave here knowing how well-respected you are and how many people who are not here tonight really, truly appreciate your dedication to this borough. So, thank you and best of luck.
Thank you, Joan. I'd like to wish you a very happy retirement with my best wishes. Thank you, madam.
We go back a long time. I think I've known Joan since her daughter worked for us, Cobble Banker. And her daughter is just as beautiful as she is. And I want to thank you for your friendship and I wish you the best.
I think Mr. Levens has a tough act to follow, so we'll see how he does. I'm going to miss you, Joan. Good luck.
And Joan, I'd just like to add a couple of words also and thank you for your words of wisdom and I hope that I can fill your, the void that you are leaving. That's a plug.
So, I'll close with, I'll reiterate what Joan said. Her and I started this venture together in 2009 when we both threw our hat in the ring. There was for two open seats and there was a handful of people who had thrown their hat in the ring at that time. Prior to then, I had never met Joan before. So, I've never sat on the dais without Joan. So, January, I'll be Kramer-less, it's going to be, it's going to feel weird. So, over the last nine years, we've worked together. We have definitely had our ups and downs. We've had our rows, so to speak. We've taken different sides on several issues. She even yelled at me once down the hallway loudly, don't deny it, it happened. There's never any doubt where Joan stands on any issue. Never was ever any doubt on where she stood on any issue. We had our Downton Abbey time, remember? I wanted to be called her ladyship and she was queeny. We've had a lot of fun, we've had a lot of laughs, we have had a lot of projects we work on together. And like I said, ups and downs. And that's what happens, I think, in small towns, is you have your ups and downs and every relationship is fluid and every job you have is fluid. And I think that it's important, especially in a small town, that you learn to leave some things behind, just see bigger picture. town, that you learn to leave some things behind, you see bigger picture things, and our relationship has been very fluid, and we're partying on the best of terms, and that makes me happy. And I do know that Joan's time on council was indeed a labor of love, she does love Stone Harbor, nobody ever, ever could doubt that. There's no doubt Joan made her mark on this community and on this council. I personally, along with my husband Doug, just wish you the best of health and happiness as you head to Florida, and Kramer, believe me when I say, I will never forget you. So, seeing no items for discussion, may I have a motion approving the bill list?
Yes, I'd like to move the approval of the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and when the vouchers are properly endorsed.
All those in favor? Opposed? We'll now have the last public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned, see you at the 96th.